Alright, well good evening everybody. Let me officially call the February 8th, 2018 work session over. Did I say? I go to the 8th because it's right here, but it's the February 12th. Meeting, the CIP work session. So, we can get right into it.
Thank you Chair and the listeners. I appreciate the good presentation discussion we had last week. And so this week we do some work sessions. To get through some of the key things, to address all the boxes. And I also want to do the transportation sections. For the last week that was in the presentation. And with open discussion of additional questions you have, we'll bring them in. As we move through these days. Second topic here is adopting new combinations. Your housekeeping things. Here you have memo today, and it is outlined as a summary of what we have planned for today. We found hard copies, quite very noted. Page 3-3 is the transportation summary. You will tap 3. Rest of the pages will under tab A. Transportation except for your PowerPoint slides. I did not reprint the entire presentation. We just put the transportation section into the main PowerPoint presentation. So we put it up to the website and said, "Not going to use other sources." So for the safety, I just gave them the slides. We'll go through that material. So as the PowerPoint goes, I did want to talk about the council. Slide 7. We did have that last week, but I did not replace it with a graphic that is current. So here it says that we have that, we have that new slide. And slide 16 is the next new presentation from the online website. Last week, the transportation section was read, it said T10. It said now the total is there for you for FY19. It was $1.6 million. Six year period, the transportation is $70 million. Very impressive on that project. So when you look at FY19, then the total of CIP is almost $14 million. And then the six year is $93 million. But notice still there that was reflected in the part 18. CIP was in that in July and that was in the six year. Then jumping to slide 26. So any slides I changed just to help with you and the community track, the Twitter has different names. You can read that, you can host the slides and change today. I did want to make sure that we have the transportation project cycle in our mind to communicate. This really is a comprehensive way we approach transportation. And it is also how we're evolving, looking at all of our other capital projects. Because those are all events in transportation. Brand tops, depend on being a cop land and after plants. So once again, we start with cop land, after that area of land. To projects to be grant applications, up in the CIE. Then designing different planning, eventually very exciting part of the cutting. Some of the key policy, I related to transportation. We have numerous projects underway. We highlighted quite a few of those last weeks. Begin with the slide presentation. New projects underway. Also captured on the snapshot, which is in tab 1 of your notebook. It goes to the local website. The access will be wrapped in that as well. We now continue what we started last year. We remind for organizing the CIP transportation projects and programs. So you'll have the core infrastructure ones, the bridges, traffic signals. Under each of those, we will have different priorities and implications. We don't do Van Bier as a project or Oak Street because of project. Traffic side. That constrains us. Grandmother sometimes we do a whole number of projects in the program. This project will not stop me. It also allows us to focus on the base of the downtown, south. Allows us to focus in the background. Project change of the same. Just like the rest of the CIE is in our six year. I bring out, it's actually the transportation projects and programs. I can see on my last report, I still see five of those. We are continuing to give the cradle to brain strategy. Crossed work before. Starts with it, I'm finishing it, although there is a lot of cross work. And we still are working. I think we're finding every year in the grant application processes. Lexi needs to come with that, but you can see, we could really look at a lot of that. There's just under $60 million in grants in CIP. And that's usually 17. Local, that's delivered a lot of that. But as we see, it's empty at 30%. Fair amount of local money, a lot of, most of that local money, 30% of the works. Which on citizens' taxes is paid by the city. There are two grants that are made unfunded. With that, I'd like to move into, let's just highlight the PowerPoint. I'd like to move into looking at the actual pages. We can go to tab 3, 3-3. Start with that section. See, a lot of projects. Up left, you can see the program organization for bridges or pavements. MBTA is wrong, for example. You'll see in transportation, like the others, you'll often see two or three lines. Or a program area, that's because of different funding sources. So I didn't hide this column because this is here. You all understand why there's two lines of bridges. So look, either one is an example. There's a federal grant, RSTB. State grant, state. So on the bridges, the total is just over $1 million. See, all of this grant public. So that's one where RSTB and state would be paired with RSTB. The two green ones that you see under pavement, 20, downtown, you may. They're green. Out of compliance sources. I have to say, 1.7 was disappointing. Unfunded, and now there's a novel. The yellow, the light yellow is the PECO. We used to leverage. And we have to have a certain. Is state funded. That's almost 13.5 million. Part usually six years. So with the additional $510,000 to add to about FY19. This work is still a thousand percent money. Projects, not normal. So while it's still under staff development, why it has a normal 10% to be a lot of 10,000. Actually, we're taxed for it in, to budget a lot of. So you can see in the left column, we're maximizing a lot of grants. Revenue share, 30%, 70%. Smart scale, state of the game, 66 money. Pretty much everything out now. The neighborhood traffic, I mean, I'll call your attention to. We have put in $10,000, 30% funding. That is to do some more light solutions that we've done this past year as well. And then in FY20, we. That's a lot of the top of our list. Three years, we've come to light solutions. Builders all up and doing things that maybe we can go back to the construction. And that allows us to minimize the strain.
Those have been quite successful.
In many cases, it might be that the light solutions work. It certainly improving is a good way to test it. So we don't have a. So we repeated that pattern in FY20 to where we have a couple thousand. We'll refine that, but so far, the anticipated plan is working. You will see there is some debt in the CIP for transportation. And so if we could, let's go ahead and go to tab 8. Bigger version of the transportation, I consider. The next page is the graphic we created last year. Local funds, ours, tickets. And I thought that was helpful. We kind of created it after we started the presentation last year. Because it kind of helps visualize on the left side, all of those grants. They have to be matched. It's all long and it's every day. That was with smart scale, lights, that's from safety. And on the other side, local actors are required. But because we never see ID. Master, the total amount we need to achieve. Then we can maximize 30%. That 30% money is cynical. We can use that to have revenue sharing, tab. Recreation trails. That's where we talked in the past, we can really get for the 10. So that's how we have $61 million in grants under six schools.
Can we do this just one more time? The local funds, how we qualify.
So let's look at traffic signals as a story. That's the third part of that. Revenue sharing, 19 is $12,000. That's 50/50 grant when you look at our spigot nation. And so we need 50% to match it. And we're using 30% money to renew. So they're both considered grants from the way we account for them. But the state considers 30%. This is the excellence of MBTA.
I see the 50/50.
These are. We're using our 30% as the 412. So MBTA 30% is state authorized money that regionally we can tax ourselves for. And then get back local programs if we completely what's said.
Yeah, I guess I did not. I thought I did, now I know. It depends on your plans. So from BDOT's perspective, in order to access the revenue sharing dollars, in this case $12,000. So the locality has to put up $400,000 of local funds. BDOT receives 30% funds to be. From the perspective of the city's budget, they're receiving to be great numbers. And that's why they're quoted in orders. So from the city's budget, in fact, they're quoted in orders because the city sees it as a grant. And that's how it's put in on the sheet. Do something else. And that's where if you jump to the spigot sheet, there are a couple of different ways to qualify 30%. One is for the city to pass the full $12.50 commercial overlay tax. At the state level, localities are authorized to pass additional levy tax. The city has opted not to. The only way to access your 30% current is to put an equivalent amount of funding as would be general from that overlay tax into a special transportation. That's why it's called CNI equivalent. So the city, this is an equivalent number of funds, the CNI equivalent is added in transportation. City's repulsion.
We still can do it. And if state has, state code is limited how you can use that money that's called overlay. It's very restrictive. It doesn't allow us to. And if we had done that commercial overlay, we could not, for example, use 30% money. So the dollar amount would be very similar. We could tax it to be got to that point. But the usage would be much more strict. It also puts.
Would that be taxing? I heard some people think it's a little bit unfair.
No, you cannot designate that just from one specific period. You can't use this there. Like you can do a CVA or something else. Now, the tricky part with, I think it's part of the question. We tried this and see the answer to your question. Is MBTA money is considered local, except for our county. Because state is authorized local taxes, granters' taxes, the gas tax, TOT taxes that are collected. So that's how. It's collective here, pay here. Back if we can see. Otherwise it doesn't.
So where do I see this 30% on this chart? I see that this for using the traffic signals. It's like a full 20, 500. But what is this CNI equivalent amount? Could I be able to see that?
For the transportation, the only place the CIE is, that's here. It's going to be in your light yellow and your dense one. So the aggregate for that is 16, 17. Yellow, that's the ICA, 500. So 17 million is basically CIE. So on the slide, not that I comment on this. Green is the 17 million six year local funds, bridges and grants. That's our CIE.
And the reason we're issuing the debt is just to make this work. It pays for itself multiple times over. They're issuing 6. Per year.
So maybe two things does make the CIE. No reason we have to do this. We have to make a level obligations. We have to make legal obligations. This is my transportation. Doing it anyways as well. No, because it's going into the dramatic cap. It's not probably operating. We're using the cash from the operating. So we're studying true digital policies. Alright, so. We can go back and forth between tab 3 and A, so we did so. So the funding, spigots, we talked a lot about the CIE then, how it needs a 30%. And then the example we used, that is the 30% is matching the revenue sharing. Also used in the past, 20 split tab. Those are alternative transportation alternatives. And it's also recreation trails. So we're also trying to use this for recreational resources that have transportation. The next page in tab A is actually 8-1. It's the official page, it's just the official graphics and resources. This is an update to the transportation reschedule that I've seen in past CIPs. This is picking up also FY19 again. So it's not all of the big projects that have started and finished, or they finished in 18. Something 10 years is standing here. This takes all those projects with the money and tries to give you a visualization. How long the next six years we're going to pull those West Wall Street. For example, we can see some local improvement starting design in 19, 23. Full construction, first $13 million. Now new in the transportation this year are a couple of projects I want to highlight. Walk through the project sheets so that you can see what the resources are. One is additional money for Park Avenue. Once we started designing and working for what do we need to do to really do that project? Funding. So we're going to apply for 2.7%. You'll see the West Falls Church Joint Campus is a new project. Let me go to the project sheets. 8-4, and I'll just go with four. The first one is bridges. Not new projects, but continuing in. Not a new progress. Continuing to work out bridges. Van Bier is already active. Time for you to have share of that. Continuing to obtain federal funding. Proceed with those projects, no badges required. None.
So I always ask the question about the share of which.
That one is probably going to pick up in FY20. Thanks. The RSTB. It meant that it didn't get converted back to black after our last staff verification. But it was like, we were just verifying. And I looked at it today and went, oops. Good, thank you for looking at it.
If I could just remove it. When that video was just completed, I hope that it joins not only the bridge that's adopted safer. It has more gastric access, but also has a zoning policy. That we did spend a fair amount of time and attention looking at designing bridges. Bridges, if you go to other places, you can application. And so there was quite a bit of time and attention for climbing this bridge. And staff is using this as a model for just the city. We're seeing this as a way to bring the city, if the construction project is already moving forward. Making sure all the bridges in the city happens as designed as a way of letting people know this is a good bridge. And I think it'll be a powerful thing, certainly on the Van Bier bridge. This is really connecting together, not just two halves of the roadway, but also two great parts. You've got Benjamin Mannaker, guys, rising across the park. There is sufficient space in the designing bridge to allow for later time benches and wood racks. That would describe why this park and that. Also, when we look at Oak Street Bridge, I think as many of you all know, Oak Street Bridge, bridges are a good trick to work. But it's hard to know that from the way the bridges design today. Again, there will be a space on that bridge side. To talk about why this bridge is required. Why is this bridge here? It's also an opportunity to tell you to highlight some areas. We just asked, if you still want to go to the construction bridge next time, just across this.
Right now, it's just like part of a.
You wouldn't know the difference.
Management, any of these things.
Otherwise, I think we would find that. Because otherwise, I think we would find that it's.
Right. I think a lot of people feel like. There's lots of. Well, I mean, you guys are shutting down streets here and there, so.
It's also a good practice to thank people, especially the rain agencies that have invested money in the city's infrastructure. Years ago. There was a Eurocred test up with the state agency and properly credited them. They were like states is a little analysis. So I think a way of saying thank you is also a way of messaging this as officially.
This is effective management. I mean, I can understand people saying not going to put bridges. Bridges aren't useful, so I'm thinking. So this is a key infrastructure kind of issue. So this is what basically.
Yeah, I mean, which was. Yeah, I mean, so we can't ignore things. We can't ignore.
People realize that. Pressure. Major. Speak to. But people realize they're even there. But still, if I do.
I think it comes out. Good news. Of the agents. They don't have a vehicle. All these schools have to be task force. Fighting. It gives out, you know, some sort of. Not just website or something around. Rents was too.
So those are valuable. And the random employees were also helping themselves. They. We're on the bridges. Names. One note, each bridge day, the day, the day. So we're going to try and do some.
Streets. So.
Streets are big.
I just wonder how many of this.
A lot of this goes back to the offensive school place that I need to. You know, our. I think for all the person finding those connections that you're. Understanding those are all people's.
So I see a lot of. Yeah, one thing that you focus could do too is I don't think. Yeah, when you go to the city websites, it's intuitive how you get to where you're signing. You focus. I mean, and you can also sign for your system. It's not intuitive, but maybe we could partner with the school that could focus add in more announcements. Saying, hey, you enjoy the. Have you signed for? How they don't really want. They have a pretty good audience. And the other thing I was thinking about is in most of the buildings where when you go in the elevators, they have a calendar. Of the things that are going on. Find more things in the city. No, no, just elevator. Like Pierced, Workday. You go in, they have activity calendars. So I've learned to give them my habitat restoration schedule and try to get in the calendars. Because little is like what you can do today. Like what you can, it's like a month. But I just wondered if they would also promote this. Because I guess they figure like you're in the elevator. Right. If all that people who are new to the city. And don't have. Kids at school. They are. Well, and I, I was talking to. Working manager. They just said they put it in there because they feel like people stay longer in the building and they start to build relationships in the building. So they try to. So they'll just have like farm of the market every Saturday. You know. Civil War days. Surely.
Work session on C I E.
That's actually something communication might want to do. Like when there's a big community meeting, try to see if they put on those calendars. But most of the buildings set up and then have calendars. Mostly Pierced.
We're helping with the C I E and our.
And you're marketing our C I Es, so all good.
I'm not sure that they're different. When you, when you have the structure programs as well as the V O A programs that, that are the investments are about. But even the, even the single projects, it's not just taking the most spend where it's putting. Kids. How do we incorporate guest access? How do we incorporate?
I just, some of you can wrap up with the big facilities out there. Or all the time.
We've got people.
Trip over our cycle. So on the pavement, eight dash five, you can see another example where revenue sharing. Four seven five. Twenty twenty, the same. This is one of the ones where you see it like I know. But right now. Pavement is listed here because if we come up with a grant opportunity, it's in the C I E and the last. As we've replaced it there, you will see in the top some focus areas. Major weekends.
Here, to have a place where the residential base.
That's the top. Supporting system. Getting any money. Other than they have to repay. Not enough cash.
Fair price.
Sometimes patches.
Something with construction.
It'd like to take down. Sometimes.
Part of it's.
Our friends are so. That's why they break down.
In places where. Rebs. Some places. Manholes that have needed.
You can point to that. Those are these nature roads.
The normal total that's. I'd be very happy if I didn't say it here. Traffic signals. Home has highlighted that a bit and that we're just not. We are trying to get off of the wires. Safe. These are scheduled in the nineteenth hour. And we want, you know, the line or the line. Quite without.
Sure, so if you look back on the main color tab sheet, you'll see that everything is coded in mortgage. Which means that it's programmed for a mix of thirty percent points and revenue sharing funds. And then programmed into the out there is there are sufficient thirty percent points to match all of the revenue sharing conditions. Revenue sharing as a grant program. So this past, this most recent fall, the city applied for F one nineteen. So these are the applications we submitted. We'll view that answers from those applications. June this year. The next application will be, the next application will be this fall. Following.
Kind of have to look at some documents. Scheduled. Then after traffic signals on eight dash seven, then we start with. Opportunity areas. Is not just, you know, keep preparing your. To implement the area plans. And try to prioritize where the resources are. So South Washington is one. The new, the new west is priority. Downtown West Broad priority. Maybe Washington. So we're trying to look at very closely. So for downtown area planning, the area I can see ten year total. Six. Lot of those. Sports school. Our transportation team members, Swiss Tada, anything to highlight on this?
Sure, if I could, just going back to that point about programming money for programming funds for each opportunity areas. That this is a strategy of using public funds to incentivize private investors to look at some of those properties that maybe they will not have. That apps in these public. I know that when the Lincoln Interior Door project, when that project was in its early landing stages. It was a difficult time for developers to find financing to get that project through. That they really relied on a lot of visual aids and conceptual aids that the planning staff was putting together. That seeing a vision of what the area could become and knowing that the city was investing its own dollars to get that vision reality. Made it easier for developers to find necessary financing to make that magic. I know when we talk about the, as staff, when we talk about the number of dollars that you're going to invest in these areas. That's an attractive number to developers because it lets them know that the city's putting the public's, being its own skin in the game. In this case, it's grant funded skin, but they're putting their own skin in the game. And that's attractive because they know they don't have to go alone. They don't have to go on board planning utility area. They need to take care of their portion to things like utility program and streetscape. But they know they've got support for the rest of the block. And so with each of those planning opportunity areas, what's defined to be, what staff is working to program in the C I E is transforming projects. We've started projects for these things. For example, in the downtown V O A, the one we're on now, I'll speak to that one. Into these smart scale funds to try and realize that vision of the park and the great streets. That we've been talking about in the city, going back to mobility for all roads. We think, talk about the modding. Talk about parts for people, parts chapter. We was talking about the downtown car plan. That idea that streets are not just places where cars are places where singer light economic happen. That streets are important because they can have two cents down. Yes, yes, I think, yes.
And then that goes with sections.
Yes, do you mean the E D A? Yeah, most recently we were talking about it with the economic development authority. That was last week. Yes. Yes. And so, yes, it's, it's a, it's a two million dollar award now. As Ms. Mester mentioned earlier, that two million dollars may not be sufficient to cover the entire scope of the project that we are working on in the short term. To find a way to get a meaningful portion of projects and people can see the vision. In some cases, this is borrowing on that light solutions, heavy solutions idea for neighborhood traffic. Is there a way to do something now? Whether that's moving application onto the parking, installing the. Replant process, installing plazas where the target public will know. Is there a way you can start the project now to retain interest because it's a relatively long time span to get the entire water project?
Next page is the traffic. Multi-mode of activity accessibility. Has a lot of goodness to it. Citing Lee, matches in the themes, if you know the word. But you'll see this one was also called grant to. You can see the projects listed here. Does your process. Bike share, safety.
Picture.
Not yet, but the, but the city does have funding for three of them and we're going after funding for four.
I didn't know we had.
Well, and some of this is, is using dollars, public dollars.
The other pictures are local.
A lot of our traffic signals would not be. We were, we're destroying those for a while regarding.
I mean, that was a big deal back then.
I have a picture of this information.
You can all put in a spring before you have the next. Yes, it's, it's a challenging environment for pedestrians. I think if, and that was recognized in the streetscape effort. In the streetscape effort that was most recently completed, there's a call for best practice. And that idea comes out of best practices and best accessibility. And so when we, some of this is not just public dollars.
...that's why the design is being modified so then there's a better sense of how to make that happen. Same thing when you look at the sixty-six, the state rate MTA seventy percent program, fifteen point seven million dollars. That is for multimodal project implementation along the entire project, which is going to go through the seven as well as state on growth and asking at new traffic signals to provide better access to the site as well as implementation of cities, standard transport facilities provided, crosswalks, transport, stand lighting, street trees, everything that goes into making this experience and ultimately providing better connections to the WLD to the south, which is down through the road as well as the west side.
This is like the fourth one that's a city side, so the developers and they have that part of it. And if they know.
We're looking for grants. Correct.
So it's a great group of people. It's a good contribution to sensible roads.
Yes, and this is always going to be seen as a partnership that along the public positions like seven, ACOG, it's a little easier to know what's needed that we know from declaring the city of the revitalization this year by the city voting for this deal revitalization, just when we're looking in the FAR failure ratio range, F one, three four FAR, and when we're looking at ten acres, you know about the amount of work which you can have in the government. And so I think it's, the case can be made even at this early stage in some sort of access for the left to let out that it's going to be needed. So the idea is that this way it covers the cost of all the signals when F R twenty-one goes around. That's what I'm saying. Seven as well, take it. And so this has to be handled certainly with beat out because of the five seventy-two, sixty-six, but also with Fairfax County because Fairfax County is on just the other side. So, and so what works with their agreement as well as for the citizens and developers. Yes, we're then looking at a developed land versus undeveloped land.
And there was interesting points in the P O A, one of them is eight twelve projects could include.
Yes, that's kind of.
We don't really have those projects on your plan.
Correct, that's the typical language that's used throughout many of the C I P program descriptions, and that's because there is some amount of blocks depending on which brands get.
But yeah, for certain. So both of them have.
Part of it is strategic because you want a pretty clear enough scope that we apply and not, you know, around the side. We can do that.
Imagine that.
Yep. Great. So that walks us through all of the transportation projects and before I move into facilities and new houses, any other comments, questions, things to clarify?
Well, as always, I don't have any questions but a comment. The leverage included in this portion of the C I P is a recent process and conference to our great staff who get all the grants and apply for them. It was a test of diversity. Can't believe it's a great company.
Separate this guy. Please. Now we have the homes at that. Possible. So people, all the same reasons here. There's no offense.
I think that we leverage ten times.
Be pleased to pass that on to staff, but there's a lot of work as we did do some of that. So working to preserve it with Richmond direction, trying to appropriate our policy for other projects. So I would like to move to facilities next, that would be tab six. And I don't know the order, but I'll go to school projects first. We wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to know about TJ six dash four, Mary Ellen Henderson six dash three. These are the new projects that are in the C I P from the school board. And we also have to prepare a follow up if that's the savings. If there's questions, I briefly mentioned last week the question about the projects or something. Let's start with TJ six dash four. I'm not sure if you had that before.
I have. So thank you so much. I'm Kristen Lightall, I'm the new chief operating officer of the schools. I started on January sixteenth and I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. Let me.
Thank you so much. You had the pleasure of having a couple of good conversations with you.
So we have talked in the past about TJ Elementary School being one, looking at the involvement and the whole broader systemic look by the superintendent building off the end. So this is new to this year's C I P, but we talked about it in July, FY eighteen, but C I P was invented. The modeling for TJ was included, there's a participative dance floor. This is in the ten year window, this is partly White Council requesting that we add a ten year hook for the C I P because otherwise, even for the sixth year, you wouldn't pick the T J. So you'll see in eleven point six, we've been anticipating it since the enrollment out and it is to be able to address problems. So that was the involvement, relevant trace. All that was.
Where is this addition going? Do we have a sense of that? Just in general, something we think could be a.
Correct, so what we're saying is when we look at that facility overall and our projected enrollment as we move into those out years, by 2027, we do project that enrollment is going to exceed the size of the building. So we look at increasing capacity, I think on that site, there are a number of different options, and I think as we get closer, we'll move more into determining where the best addition to that building would be.
So at this point, we're talking about some plans that are being considered as some linked to the fellow's property, meaning close to the street or fill up or TJ campus as of now, and then you can, I don't know, does it have a part? Is that part of the paper just in general? Just maybe standalone.
So I think first off, it's really important that we are really looking long term in terms of our enrollment projections. I think you were absolutely correct. When we think about, you know, we often kind of get kind of caught up in the short term planning, okay, there are immediate enrollment, but we really need to be looking out for that longer term, particularly as was noted in our cap in terms of our enrollment about Daniel. So it's really critical that we're thinking about that long term enrollment. When we think of that actual site and that fellow's property across the street, I really do think there are many options that could be used there in terms of maximizing both the space for instruction and the usage of the outdoor space for both the school and the community. So I feel like for me this evening, it's too deliberate for me to say exactly what we're thinking, although I know some of that.
Be careful.
And some of that school site, it's also in a flood plain, right? So that's also going to really impact that overall site design as we think about increasing capacity from.
Fortunately, also, right that we started, we're not running it properly.
So when you look at Matt Daniel, right now, we have kindergarten in first grade, second grade will move there. That is the plan, and then that school is capped in terms of that's where we look at that.
And that means the little cottages.
So hopefully, right, we can eliminate those tiny cottages, really as we look to these out years, really look at permanent building space.
I was gonna say, you may be the intention, you may be the important cottages. Those are the flood plain, right? And that's.
So I was thinking about, you have the courtyard, yeah, really cottages.
Yes. That's it. Unless, unless we need to.
For this all kinds. There's been a bad analysis that like, you know, the children's school, you have the sports, gyms, the coalition, I think it was one between across the street. It was important to have the ten year plan and the planning numbers. This is not intended to be a place holder, because it has been passed, we know which can be, we know their places. So then going to Mary Ellen Henderson, this is the one that has three thousand and twenty-four to eighteen, six thousand and three, and then the out years past the sixth year, two thousand, twelve thousand, two thousand. This is replacing the flooring and replacing the roof. This is one I mentioned that in the C I P is not funded, we need to find a funding source for that. This type of high level cannot be taxed upon finance. And so the question is, how do you have ACOG to accommodate this? Or is there a way, since we're already completely doing a large project up there, a high school, neck, synergy there, that might be a possibility? That's a conversation that we're going to have on hold over this next two, two weeks, very much, because we might have some conversations today. Here, we're just having a little conversation about that, but once again, we want to have the more perspective here. You can see the schools do not have a sort of prioritization of projects. Just go around, let it feel softer, but they now have to change instead of just a bottom body, it's not focused on these.
At least we don't have to. At least we don't have to. Sorry.
I mean, high school, everyone, everyone, high school.
That's, that's ridiculous. As we look at planning and what our outcomes are, it really is important at cost of operations in terms of classes.
Thank you. Last week, the ten year, there's a new hot, paranoid work for us, and so I'm down the next year when you see this, that we call, you know, to the out. Facility reinvestment, road reinvestment. Yeah. It's under the Rex and Park section, and I do want to, my gosh, we're going to have data on the fellow's property and it's tied into what we would see, so council hasn't approved the proceeding to make the decision. Reach that process in a way you could be able to use that process. I don't have any more updates on that, but you do have under the Rex and Park tab under nine dash three, where for Apple White twenty-two, there's five hundred thousand in share that would need to address the college, they got a clever dairy concept of park boost, that's the master plan, and it would need to have that, and it would need to have the core part of the school.
Yes, that, yes, that amendment was made close to the religious map and.
So this showed that both parks or schools need to be ever. But pursuant to the planning commission's recommendation last year, the council's recurrence, this is adopted as primarily the parks used, which was alternative and projects that are probably inside the first plan, which is to be faster, certainly have to be analyzed.
Okay.
We have the court. Other facility, I know that last week, I put this representation on last week, so I like that. So for each of the years, looking at six dash two, you have a line item where we have ACOG money available, patch to do projects, these also would not tax upon finance. You'll see in nineteen, there's two thousand and four, the continually reinvestment. The staff actually asked for the step, but we're creating money, so the roll over is going to never be the money, which is why I have a question. But for each of the out years, you will see, just like we do in this. Here, we do the patch, built up, we almost got two thousand, but it's. We're, the picture here is a picture of the farmhouse, which actually shows the restoration of the hallway hall. And they were able to restore it with just a few metal straps and then they dug up this wallpaper, supported the property, our end back, it's perfect, but you can't put down it. But it was nice to have something in use. So some of the projects that build into that, I didn't actually announce for some collections, so staff has basically for each of the years, building projects in that column, around two thousand, I think. So the types of things that we're looking at are property, our toilet, that does we replace, our house exterior, the rest stairs that we replace, armed security upgraded, armed, there's a lot of stuff. The most great part is urban gutter replacement, parking lots, our house kitchen, partial replacement, twenty, A B A ram, HVAC, generator of the door of house. So they've kind of taken each of the properties and started the reinvestment, reinvesting planning. It's still a work in progress, new work undertaken right now, the things for city hall, not here term, city budget for that, but then that, you know, back position. Same type of line right now, these type of projects.
So it's the same thing in Apple Schools, I mean, we just talked about, just finished that section, but it looks like there's going to be a lot of money in the out years, and this is going to be reinvestment in the C I Ps as you can.
For the schools, we have a lot of.
Yeah, like, I mean, for example, the Thomas Jefferson gave eleven to six billion, that's for just the expansion, but is there money that aside for reinvestment?
I think that we're starting to work, we have high school, we have a lot of, along the plan. It's a joint C I P, so the school should be in here, and I know that it's been here very long, but we're a couple of extra planning, reinvestment facilities, we have closed nineteen, unfortunately, it's not going to all the facilities.
We're still starting here, since we're redoing a lot of things right now, so our cycle is raising, we get so much to take out in the past few years, so.
We will. The ideal will allow us to stay in the facility, that's the plan, that's what's been done up there, that basically says every year, target circle thing to immediately set, it's following right behind, it needs to be wrapped, it needs a HVAC, it's addition of something about the ninety, so all we've got all of the library, city hall, the organization, TJ, all, just that, we all got it at the same time, we need to start now investing, getting the HVAC off cycle, you know, getting it off cycle, roofs, like.
From that, you know, future investment. So.
So, so that covers sort of the project areas that were transportation that I had reported on and questions. I'd like to open up and kind of move to policies, priorities, you asked about possibility, changing one thing, specific directions I would like to provide in preparation. In the memo I gave you last week, which is a new report, starting at line one eighty-four, with sample additions. So there's a motion to refer all one of the modifications. The groupal one, I just wanted to highlight, your awareness, it has six justifications listed, these are basically to justify. So the first one would be adopted as likely as it's good, changes to the project years after. The second one would be.
I'm still. Reason why we wish we could use more. Barely was. I think we're, to, to all things. I know we can get into, some of the things in justification may be true, I mean, I may personally agree with some, I don't know, it's an obligation to not roll, make it. Doesn't, it's not a job, mostly prototypes, each other, I guess, so. I don't know, maybe I'm getting into another code, but is that what it says?
I think that is correct with the modification basis. So if you go to tab one, page one dash four, I have two pieces, the city code, which are two, yes, the state code does have a plan official form. And that is as well, and the city of Falls Church, which is unlike majority, under the capital budget, we will make a recommendation from the city manager to include this in this budget, and also has to have need to find this. So we're actually.
In this case, we've been very constrained because of COVID, but at the very beginning, we actually had some, a little bit of leeway, and we did actually like modify the C I P by itself, but we think.
About Dan, you know, this is exactly.
One year we moved the fire truck out, but it was when I think I decided they wanted fire trucks changed every five years, but what was ridiculous, like, like. Really life cycle of the fire truck. So we, we've had more ability to make changes. It's just we're constrained in using. Facility investment. And it's only because of transportation grants. So people really have anything to work on. Right. Well, we had moved out Daniel Mall because we thought. It's all based on. How much, but if we had a good investment. But I don't currently, I don't know how the other commissioners are. I don't see anything that needs to be qualified. I. I'm happy to see a switch this year. I think it's very, very. As much as possible.
We've mentioned that last week that there would be some flexibility. Choose to generalize transportation. But, you know, park investment plan is. Two point. Ten year. There's nothing. Security, even the defense, if you want the land, then you have to pay that. We delayed.
I mean, we had these. Delayed paths. I think it's. I mean, the parts you can see.
And also operation, we're getting with. With. Talk to us.
That's a good point. Yeah. And that's a good point. I did officially forgot to. That was. That's not the security. I think.
The one thing they're also worried about is this. And if I get that, that would be some other. Grand. Situation.
Park itself.
Somehow I hit some reality.
Timing is challenging. I know. Just to get the water off there. And it was just. Pipes are.
Hold that. And that less than. It's like they're worried about here.
That's possible.
So based on where. Yeah, that's the game.
I tend to agree. We're just curious. I think we addressed this last week. We just can't respond. Some of the out years twenty. Twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-three. Debt services or some expenditures is going to be. So. Are the true response was there could be some action taken to address that?
Council is heard. You review. I do policies. To make a difference to. Live. Deadish. That's actually a part. Scary. There was a question on my line. Policies. Speaking. And the debt service policy. Page three dash four. See how it is.
Good evening, I'm Karen Bawa, the Chief Financial Officer for City of Falls Church. Um, so the current fiscal policy we have. Uh, has a threshold of twelve percent debt service to expenditure ratio. And payout ratios of um, twenty-five percent in five years and up to fifty percent of the debt in ten years. Um, as we projected the full CIP. We noticed that and when we modeled it with different interest rates and the different projects at estimated budget costs. Um, there are about six to seven year window where the city will be out of compliance with this. Um, so, and we're issuing the school bond in three tranches fiscal year nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Um, and of course, this all ties into the credit ratings. So with that in mind, we would have to make our policies a little bit more robust. Um, showing that we are, you know, fiscally sustainable and making every effort to either boost our. Uh, reserve, um, inclusive of capital reserve, the unassigned fund balance, other reserves that we may have. As needed, because we will be drawing down into the capital reserve. At specific rates over the years as we pay out the increased debt ratio with the new debt service that's coming on. Um, the policy amendments that are in the pipeline right now propose that. Um, we go from right now, the policy says we have a floor of twelve percent and a target of seventeen percent for unassigned general fund balance. And the new amendments proposed that are being considered are to spike it to a fifteen to twenty percent. But of available balance, which includes the capital reserve and the unassigned general fund balance collectively. Um, and we, it still has the same, it gives, if you fall below a limit, it gives you three years to come back to the lower limit, another two years to come back to the higher limit. So as a conscientious effort for a city. Because we will be assuming at least three times more amount of debt. Right now, debt service is sixty-one million plus. And with the new another six, a hundred and sixty-three million coming. We'd be able to earn twenty million debt. So it is, it is a big amount of debt that the city is going to be taking on. And the credit rating agencies obviously want to make sure that we are financially strong and able to take on this responsibility. Yeah, so um, we have gone through the Budget and Finance Committee at the end of January and it's coming to council back on February twenty-sixth. And we're going for our first issuance in um, late spring. Credit rating agencies is end of April and mid-spring, early spring. So on the issuance.
So I'm making it more robust. I'm just hearing your. I know I obviously changed the ratio, the percentages through the policy action, but primary responses to.
Uh, and not just the unassigned general fund balance, but collective available balance, including the capital reserve. We have a permit reserve, so we kind of uh, commit that should we fall down below a certain threshold. Then we have this funding available for us to fall back on in case of emergencies. And these days, from what we are hearing from our financial advisors is that they are looking at. Um, the rating agencies are looking for at available funding rather than just the unassigned fund balance. And that um, the, there are other cities that have taken on certain things and they know, you know, they've done a good amount of comp studies with other cities and their other clients to come up with. To us. Overall, our, the debt, the fixed debt that the rating agencies look at include not just the capital debt. It also looks at our OPEB, the other post-employment benefits that we owe and other debt that we have. So right now, we are in a good window of sixteen percent if they look at it as a percentage of your expenditures. But with this new hundred and sixteen um, plus million coming. It, you know, it's, it's gonna end new debt service that we're gonna start the first year. Uh, the issuance is less because it's primarily for design. The year two and three, the issuances are larger amounts, it's primarily for construction. That's when our new debt service is gonna rise to about almost to ten to eleven million in specific years. We have to be ready to make sure that we are able to take on that kind of. Commitment.
So the policy will call out that in the excess. Revenues will be in the year.
So we've talked about this in meetings, talking about school. Um, outside of what the bond or the rating agencies are saying, do you feel like we are prepared to take on? I mean, I know we've improved it from the referendum as well. As. So it's tracking. Will comply with this addition. And. Should we, in your opinion, be making all these investments? CIP, should we be conservative?
Well, there's always a, you know, a give and take. There, there, um, the CIP that we have for you today is definitely strongly supported by grants and other, you know, earmark funding that we get from ETAs. And commissions funding. However, that's the chart, the, the full debt service that we have with all the projects. Um. Falls Church has good fiscal policies and good financial procedures in place as control. I, I personally, I mean, I gave that recommendation to council. We had a modified CIP with a little staggered amount of debt. I personally would have felt more comfortable because that was our recommendation. Um, however, we wanted to escalate the timing, uh, you know, of all expedite, I should say, of all the projects and start them within the two-year window. And um, that's. It, and it, it is a big commitment, there's no doubt. However, our um, assessed valuation is in the right direction, even in the down years. It did not see, um, you know, a catastrophic drop like most of like states like California and some other cities that saw the real estate drop. So I feel that um, we can hold it as long as we continue to make our reserves strong and have a fall down place. Should the economy have some, you know, we are in the ninth or tenth year of recovery. Everybody knows some sort of adjustment is expected as long as we prepare ourselves in um, to mitigate those, you know, tough years. I think we should be okay.
Those tough years are important. This is unassigned.
In those years, we didn't have a capital reserve, so this is what was available.
And this one. Top, it was also built in. Five million dollars a year. And additional debt issuers to the. We're talking. Best thing. CIP is not just. A lot of. Basically something.
So the reinvestment plan. Is partially here, but we'll see more about it in the next year. It's gonna be mostly dead.
Uh, the school?
In January, we had said that there's gonna be. More detailed plan for general facility reinvestment.
Right.
Here that maybe that.
Well, the idea is. Now, the idea is that um, once we have a facilities maintenance plan and a replacement plan and we, if we identify a specific amount of funding that we need. On an ongoing basis. And if we can include it as parts, at least the equipment included as part of the pay-as-you-go funding. Then we know and we can smooth out the peak years and trough years and kind of balance it out that every year we need four hundred thousand and we'll be good with all our cars and. Uh, radios and whatever else that we use. We can build it somehow into an operating capital structure if we, if we have a good sense of a good ten year or twenty year. I've done in the past, I've done twenty to twenty-five year plans, so we have a very good sense of how our funding should be lined up. Facilities definitely will have to be, they're gonna be larger amounts, they have to be defined.
For, for the part, but not all. So our stuff is like we were talking. Anderson.
If it's not maintenance, it'll have to be pay-as-you-go, but if it's replacement, it can be.
We have to.
So according to that chart, that um, turquoise color on top is starting in twenty-seven. Uh, we can start taking or twenty-six, we can start taking on about five million every other year and.
Outside of the six-year. And this, this whole debt doesn't um, take that into. Actually, this is just great.
Right. I mean, this doesn't show a true impact just to the general fund because this includes capital reserves and other funding. Um, also, if we were to get the economic development, the land for the lease, the government piece, all the funding. This model accounts for some funding from there as well.
Based on this chart, why do we think?
Oh, I, I think it's twenty-seven where if you take it on twenty-six, the debt service starts in twenty-seven, the debt service always starts a year later. Which means a little bit later. The TJ, TJ was the moving target in all this earlier and some of the earlier versions that we had seen, it was kind of. Um, projected a little bit earlier. However, in the recent, uh, when the new submissions came from the school, it's been pushed back to.
So basically in twenty-eight, there the purple policy line is applied to the.
Right.
Are you above? Red bar to above.
Yeah, I, I used to twenty-six.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
How involved were you with the creation of the CIP?
No, I was fully engaged. Most of their meetings. No, I was fully engaged, most of their meetings. And, and I, I mean, obviously I have the other fiscal interest of seeing how the funding is channeling to a lot of, because it affects all other, the other funding sources that the funding comes from. And the best master talked about the legislation.
Tracking, generally, trying to get some additional state money.
Yeah, we touched on that. Okay, I think in your version, so. So I, just to mirror, we already said, I don't have any implications based on what I heard. This chart says it all. I feel like we're fully allocated at this point. So in the near term, I think it's, I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion as posed for. Yeah, no, I mean, to do this in two sessions is.
This, this is amazing.
So next week, it is open for public hearing. Feel comments on that and then take a vote pretty soon. We don't have anything else we need to do. So we're done with this particular work session? Not as a release to C I P, I was curious in hearing about the retreat that some of you attended. That's not, yours free to leave, but I did want to hear a little bit about it.
It was a different format in that it was set up at the beginning of small ones. Every day, pretty much every day we had a. And so, which is different than we've ever done before.
Usually.
Really mixed up.
Usually the, you know, their council, they, the. And then there's the question really, this was actually in fact, and it, you know, so black titties. And talked about. Now. And then they eventually came to say. Thing like this about.
Yeah, I was also, I was curious about our recommendations of things that are important if they get just mixed in. Was there a lot of overlap? Because we had talked about strategically getting ours as separate entities or trying to join.
And I think that's what they're looking at. I don't think our specifications overlap a lot.
We tried not to make it, but I'm saying, so now that you saw this, should we have, should we have strategically said, these are things that we'd like to see and tried to match other committees?
I think E D A, I think we're really new to. Since the president, the conversation on Saturday, that somebody simplified. When I, the first time, there was a lot of discussion on human services. And we, when we said we were looking at the fringes of the nation. Then I'm offended that. So it's the first time I have heard a really good conversation that was across the board.
In general, it was important, like, what was important for expanding the output was important in some cases. It didn't get down to detail, but then with this, it was something that's a bit. So I assume you guys are gonna try to.
Yeah, the example that was provided about successes from previous reports was this framing of council desires as instances. So four years ago, there was a council in close to the water, people, I didn't see it. And then look at where this happened over the last four years. A lot of those grand dollars that the city has been out there and won, that completed two-year walk-through. But the documents that have come from the process of the document, the water. A lot of the design changes and streetscape standards are based on walk-throughs we receive. That idea of walk-through, it works its way across, the city spectrum between a lot of different reasons. And I think in the same way, affordability could be a similar impulse. It relates to certainly housing affordability, but also tax rate. I think certainly it's senior housing, helping people have lived in the city for a long time and now find themselves sitting on a house that has a lot of. They don't necessarily have a passion, so it's the affordability of your life situation. In the same time, what is affordability in a city? Is there something like moving in a Z O L, and it could be a trend to buy and stay in a six-hundred-seven-thousand-dollar house? That doesn't sound like a good one. And affordability also relates to people living on a work and, as well. And then also where we are moving secure, our housing is, you know, to have a. So that affordability idea stretches across the issues. It was also really a very popular. And we've certainly talked about projecting, oftentimes the city's projections of expenditure. What we've been talking about especially this is the spending department. Services, how we project that we have fiscal type on it. Site plan, we can also. So what our targets are consistently not to be, it's to be held on one. At a different pace in five, ten, twenty years. And how we got made to. And their new strategy of using, putting any policies in.
Biggest group of boards and commissioners that were seeing. They all had ownership of things that they had put in. And so they had a piece of the action. And it was all, you know, considered in the fact that there was so many diversity of people sitting at each round table that got points of view through. They're even to police officers. You know, so it was just a totally different format. And all the different job of facilitating it in Sydney and.
So I'm happy to front you, there was a big team supporting the whole effort. A lot of staff members.
And they were there too. That was so much. And it was a little different, like a war house. But I, I think too, like some things translate really well. We did talk about parking a lot, it's more broad, it's actually. It'd allow us to.
Apps, we need apps.
Yeah, there's apps, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, but that, a lot of that came up and there were some really nice buckets that would buy some stuff we said. So definitely parking, we need to be able to more green space and kind of broaden our. Efficiently turn to green space and parks. So a lot of our stuff came up in there and there was some big clusters. And I think out of the map.
So this is just information gathering and now they're gonna take this information to create an action plan for next two or three years?
Yes, so typically the city council docs means progress on two or three, two years. So there was a. The schedule going forward is for staff to compile, comment, and then let's receive a working session. That'll be presented, scheduled the presentation against. I am confident with staff. Hopefully, again, that's to be back there and it'll be for adoption. Two work sessions in action. Well, that's the city council board and the postal march meetings, the planning commission. And so we.
Maybe, maybe shouldn't be in March.
I would move forward. The, the agenda for planning commission appears here quite much, so it could pick out later. So I mean, you can take advantage of that. I think also by the time your, the planning commissions, March nineteenth. You'll have a second draft of whatever council work manager sets, or that's on your package. Yeah, so that, that, the themes that council was identifying were things like viability for, for holding residency, full services, executive cap. These are things that stretch across a lot of.
Like kind of everything that's on the mission is that. Specifically, but they. And, and I kind of figured that that was something you guys. There's transportation, people that you met this. Say. My time was spent.
It's got a full description of that, I think. Good. You tell, you tell my boss that.
And still, and still not, and still not every board of vision was represented by a person. Which, uh, which you still have that. But there were more, there, it's usually just conflict and a less than me, so. That's a couple of others.
All right, well, the fun continues next week.
Never, never watch this.
For the March thirteenth retreat date, I think we'll start at six and the nineteenth, yes. So we're gonna bring in dinner, but I'd like to have some suggestions.
So there'll be this one, the rest of the year, mostly gonna be here or it's gonna jump around?
The, the times when we have to move, obviously, the school board gets. So the only times we have conflicts is.
Last year, when you, last year with Subway, maybe we can do something. Go to the subway. Put that on the record.
Yes.
We eat lunch at Panera, they make them in Alexandria, and then they deliver you here. So they also charge you for delivery.
Yeah, Panera's better than Subway.
Five, we chose, so it doesn't. It's, it's just one night for you to go to a lot of.
If you go to Panera, getting it from downstairs. Pizza is five. There's so many, we are the number one city in the country in all facets, we can handle.
If, if we wanna get, if we wanna get, they're really funny, it'd be funny to get the.
All right, now, we're gonna have to take this off. Accepted pretty much without. All right, see everybody next week.
Let's support a local, how about that? Let's support a, whatever restaurant we choose, let's make sure it's a locally, you know, local restaurant, not a national chain.